Good morning and welcome today to the Tuesday, September 20th, regular meeting conducted by the County Commission. Today, leading us in our invocation is Pastor Rick Malagani with the Fair Hope Christian Church, and I'll ask him to come up to the podium if y'all would please stand.
Forgive God in prayer. God, we thank you for the opportunity to gather here this morning to discuss the future of this wonderful county. We ask you to bless the leadership and all that have business before this county this morning. Help us to make wise and honest decisions that take into account all people and all points of view. We ask for everything we say and do to bring honor and glory to you. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Sheriff, will you lead us in the pledge?
Please, you want me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, Commissioners. Today, before us, we have several meeting minutes that we need to adopt. The first is August 19th, 2022, special meeting, which is the budget deliberations.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion we approve August 19th, 2022, special budget meeting.
Second.
We got a motion by Commissioner Gruber, second by Commissioner Underwood to approve August 19th, 2022, and adopt the special meeting minutes budget deliberations. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next.
I'll move, make a motion that we adopt the minutes from August 26th, 2022, special meeting budget deliberations.
I'll second that.
We got a motion by Commissioner Gruber, a second by Commissioner Underwood to adopt the August 26th, 22 special meeting budget deliberations. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I'll also make a motion we approve August 31st, 2022, regular meeting, a special meeting for the budget deliberation.
I'll second that.
We got a motion by Commissioner Gruber, second by Commissioner McKenzie to approve August 31st, 22 special meeting minutes and adopt those minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next up, we have our regular meeting, September 6th. I need a motion on that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the September 6th, 2022, regular meeting minutes.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Commissioner Underwood, a second by Commissioner McKenzie to adopt the September 6th, 2022, regular meeting minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, Commissioner Gruber.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion we pay bills totaling $4,346.21. With the exceptions of those items that are listed in the Ballin County accounts payable, which there are none, another amount, $1,251,099.40 is payable to the Ballin County Board of Education, and $92,842.40 is payable to the Gulf Shores Board of Education for their portion of the county sales and use tax.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gruber to pay the bills, a second by Commissioner Underwood. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Commission, we are next on our consent agenda. As you look through your index, please note when we make motions to adopt the consent agenda, please, whoever makes the motion, note the red index notations of the replacement items or any thing extra.
This goes all the way through, it's all the C items, right?
All the C items.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve our consent agenda with notation of CA2 has a replacement item, the resolution number corrected throughout item due to incorrect assignment of a resolution number, and then the next notation would be item C01.
CQ.
What's that one that says?
Well, so that's fixed itself.
There's no notation there anymore.
Okay, well, they still have some red letters in there.
I'm sorry.
All right, well, then we will disregard that, and continuing on with my motion, we will have item CQ1, which has a replacement attachment, position descriptions, and organizational charts added and updated. And then item CR4 has a replacement item, information corrected throughout the document to reflect the correct date of December the 20th. All that being said, I make that motion that we approve the consent agenda with those notations that I just stated.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Underwood, a second by Commissioner McKenzie to adopt our consent agenda with the noted replacement items dealing with item CA2, CQ1, and CR4. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. So next up, we're at our planning and zoning, excuse me, presentations. My bad. Presentations. Today, we have a couple of proclamations. One is going to be Ride Yellow Day, and the other one is going to be the Archives Month in October. This one, and I'll do this one.
Okay.
Kenny, y'all want to come down to the podium here?
(inaudible). Ride Yellow Day, sir?
Yes.
Go ahead and ride the other day in there.
Commissioners, after we get through the presentation, I'd like for y'all to come down and give a quick.
Yes, sir. Proclaiming October 1st, 2022, as Ride Yellow Day in Bowlin County, Alabama. Whereas Ride Yellow is an infirmary health annual charity bike ride held on October the 1st, 2022. The ride begins at Holiday Park in Baymanet with a six-mile tribute ride, and the option to continue pedaling the 10, 20, 37, or 62-mile routes. And whereas Ride Yellow was founded in 2007 by Ann White Spunter and Mary Trufant to raise cancer awareness and to draft grassroots support for their mission of inspiring and empowering people affected by cancer. And whereas since the 2007 inaugural ride in Loxley, Alabama, Ride Yellow has steadily grown and raised more money for cancer charities each year. And whereas last year, Ride Yellow donated $15,000 to Camp Rappahoe, a local nonprofit organization that offers free, year-round recreational and support programs to those with childhood cancer and their families, and has donated more than $538,000 to various cancer charities since its inception. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Bowlin County Commission and regular session assembled, that we hereby proclaim October 1st, 2022, as Ride Yellow Day in Bowlin County, Alabama.
Thank you. Shady.
Do you want to say anything?
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. We just wanted to say thank you all. Ride Yellow wouldn't be possible without all the help and support that we receive from the community, so thank you guys so much.
Thank you all for being here. If y'all want to stick around just for a minute, the Commissioners may want to have comments on this proclamation. Commissioners, y'all have anything y'all want to add?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to thank them for all they do with this yellow ride for awareness of childhood cancer. It's becoming more and more relevant, so, you know, it's something that they take dear to their heart and try to take care of, and will affect them so very much for that.
Hey, I think it's always great that we can do this and give the recognition that is deserved, and we appreciate you guys making the effort to do this. It is, most of the people who engage in these things are already busy people. For you to actually be able to continue to do this, this is an awesome statement, and we appreciate your efforts.
I'd just like to say thank you. You know, somebody that most of us have lost somebody with cancer, and I lost a sister at 21, and, you know, different family members, and I just want to say thank you all for doing this. Cancer's tough on a family. Thank you.
Yes, Kenny, thank you all. Thank the infirmary healthcare system, along with another wellness centers and all those, I can remember when I worked at the wellness centers, putting together Ride Yellow was something. I mean, it was a very arduous task, but at the end of the day, very rewarding to see what it produced, the finances that were raised to contribute to all these great organizations. And, correct me if I'm wrong, I heard you were signing up for the 62-mile stretch, so anyway, I look forward to the event. It's always fun to see that happening in Baymanet and seeing all the riders. It's, y'all have never seen anything like this, the bike riders, y'all need to come to Baymanet on this day, and they'll have all different kind of things after the ride is over with, and regroup at Holiday Park. So either that, or make sure you get your travel plans planned if you're leaving Baymanet and driving through town, because they will shut it all down. So thank you all for coming here and accepting this proclamation, Commissioners.
That being said, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adopt this proclamation for Ride Yellow Day.
I'll second the motion.
We got a motion by Commissioner Underwood, and a second by Commissioner Gruber to adopt this proclamation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. Next up, we have item number DA2, proclamation Archives Month in October of 2022. Ms. Felicia and her staff are here to accept this proclamation.
I guess I have to get my microphone if I'm going to read it right. Okay, y'all come on around here. Okay, the proclamation proclaiming October 2022 as Archives Month in Bowlin County, Alabama. Whereas archival records contain information of enduring value to the communities, institutions, and citizens of Bowlin County, and are essential for understanding the past, coping with the present, and preparing for the future. And whereas archival records protect the rights of citizens, provide transparency and accountability for the action of government, document the growth of our economy and institutions, and connect today's generations with the legacies of their forbears. And whereas archival records support research into health, environmental, social, and economic issues, provide vital resources for the education of our young people, and form the basis of programs for the edification and enjoyment of the general public. And, take a breath. Whereas Bowlin County professionals, archivists, and staff play a critical role in identifying, preserving, and making available these records. And whereas through these archives, future generations of Bowlin County, Alabama can more accurately study the past, learn from the accomplishments of their predecessors, trace their ancestors, understand their community's pride of place, confirm property rights, and maintain laws while celebrating the history of our county. And whereas October has been declared National Archives Month in the United States by the Society of American Archivists, the International Council on Archives, and the Society of American Archivists, and it is fitting that Bowlin County join in this observance. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Bowlin County Commission in regular session assembled, that we hereby proclaim October 2022 as Archives Month in Bowlin County, Alabama, and encourage the public to visit the Bowlin County Archives facility and other archives and museums throughout the area. Sorry, I had to turn my back to y'all because the microphone was right here. That makes me feel a little bit weird, but thank you guys so much. Absolutely. And we need to join up here. All right, smile for a second. Okay, now let's get up front, and y'all get front center.
All right. George.
All right. One, two, three.
Thank you guys so much. You guys did a great job.
I see what taller she is.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Most of you know me, but for those of you who don't, my name is Bradley Helms. I work at the Department of Archives and History with Mrs. Anderson. Thank you for the proclamation declaring October Archives Month. At the Archives, we strive to tell the story of the county through our collection and upkeep of the records we are entrusted with. We hope that during this month, we can make the public aware of how to use the Archives to tell their story. Again, thank you for this proclamation.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I want to personally thank you for the proclamation and to introduce myself. My name is Annette Bell, and I am the newest member of the A-Team, as I call it, Archives and History, and I am very grateful to be a part of the team. I'm learning so much, and I enjoy it, and I want you to know I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Archives Month. We all know that October is set aside to focus on the importance of historical records and to also inform the public about Archives and the work that we do. We collect, we document, and we preserve our county's history. Now, I need one thing, and that is, we need more voices to champion the idea that Archives, it matters. Oftentimes, it's underrepresented, and people don't really understand what we do. But I often ask the question, just think about how do you feel when you can't remember something?
Yes.
Or when you need something really important and you can't find it? That's what we are. We are your memory banks. We serve as your memory, and without a memory, there's no society, there's no culture, no civilization. It's just people would live life the way they modified to be. We also serve as accountability, evidence, and transparent for each of our county departments. So it's vitally important, the profession and the work that we do. So what we're asking the public to do is to stop by in Baymanet and our facility, meet the staff, those that work every day to preserve our history. If you have any items of historical significance, properly care for those so that they may be of use for future generations. And in observance of this Archives Month, we have a few events lined up to showcase our fascinating history. We have like a two-minute slideshow. We're going to run through really quickly a few of the events we have lined up for this month. Please know that this information will be on the Archives and History page of the County Commission's website, and you can also follow us on Facebook.
We got it coming. We got people hard at work on this.
Well, as he's preparing the slide, I'll go ahead and talk about some of the things that we have coming up this month. On October 1st, we have Old Time Days. The Old Times Days event focused on our farming industry. That event is located at Bicentennial Park in Baymanet, I mean, in Stockton, and that event is from 9:00 to 4:00. Also, on October 6th, what we did, we went through our collections, and we tried to find something, you know, just to tell a little bit about our history, and what was more appropriate to find out that the county seat was removed from Daphne to Baymanet in October. Wasn't that wonderful? So this year marks the seventh year that we've been actually performing or putting on this reenactment, and that'll be on Thursday, October 6th, at the courthouse in Baymanet from 5:00 until 7:30. And the fun part about this event is many of our county officials, elected officials, actually reenact to try to make it more accurate. And then also, what we're going to do on October 22nd at the courthouse in Baymanet as well, from 1:00 to 3:00, we're going to host a scavenger hunt. We're going to have historic site scavenger hunts. So we'll divide people up in teams. The public is invited to attend, and you will go out, and there'll be clues to find all the historic sites around Baymanet. So just meet us there if you'd like to attend.
That's awesome.
Yeah, there's some sound there, but that's okay. Kind of the same thing we just talked about, the purpose of Old Time Days, and here's a few photos of that event in the past.
Yeah, I love old tractors like that.
There's quite a few of them on display there. They have plowing demonstration, peanut threshing, cane syrup they make on hand on site.
It's really.
Like I said, we really focused on our farming industry, which was really big in Bowlin In the past, we've had, it depends, you know, with COVID, of course, there were some issues, but we've had several thousand people in attendance. This year, we've had, we have many vendors that have already signed up. Here's, you'll see the reenactment. We have some of our elected officials. Mayor Wills and Cliff McCullough serve as Mr. Kramer from Daphne, and representing Daphne, Bob Wills represents Baymanet as Leslie Hall, the attorney for the Commissioners that brought home the county seat. Al Talbot, he portrays J.D. Hand. Commissioner Ball, J.B. Blackburn. Well, O.E. McMillan, actually, and Jesse Peacock is J.B. Blackburn. Our very own sheriff actually portrays the sheriff, Mr. Bryant. And some of the reenactors, actually, they are descendants of the actual Commissioners or some of the men that actually brought the county seat home. This year, we've tried to add to it, and the goal is to actually tell the full story. We also have a period of tire contest. We ask everyone to join us. Dress up 1901, which is the Edwardian period. Always a very fun time. The public do a very good job with this. So pull out your hats and come out and join us.
Thank you for the ideas, because now I got to find some clothes.
I know. The mayor, Daphne, will be with us this year. He was in attendance last year, and he really enjoyed the reenactment, so this year, he will be involved more. This is the courthouse in Daphne, 1868. Of course, it was erected in 1901, and this was the Baymanet courthouse in 1901. And of course, the scavenger hunt will be in Baymanet on the 22nd from 1:00 to 3:00. We encourage you all to come out. Thank you so much for this proclamation.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Commissioners?
Just thank you, Felicia, for what y'all do within Archives. You know, there's so much history here in Bowlin County that it's amazing how much history is here, you know, from the Civil War and stuff like, all this stuff, you know, it's all happened here, you know, even, you know, Fort Morgan, you know, that actually went even to the World War II. It was occupied during that time. So y'all have got a lot of history, and not just history, but a lot of records that go back to, you know, back way when, you know, and y'all have, how much?
1798.
Yeah. So y'all got all of those intact and preserving them for the future, for people to know what happened here in Bowlin County, and thank you so very much for that.
I'm just amazed all the time at all the interesting things that I learned about the history of Bowlin County, and honestly, I've said this before, I didn't know that you could go and visit the Archives Department until I've become a Commissioner, and I've been there a few times. I wish I had more time to come and just spend days there, and it is so amazing learning all this stuff that there is, and I- And I knew that we had an Archives Department, but I didn't realize it was like an Archives almost library type situation. And it's really, really neat. For those of you who have never visited it and didn't know about it, I encourage you to look these guys up, because they're awesome when you go there. They help you with anything that you want. And also, and Bradley, I hope I don't embarrass you, but I was gonna say that when I saw you the other day, you were talking about how much you liked your job. And being in this position, I tell you what, there's times when that just makes you feel like what you're doing is worth what you're doing. And I just thank you for liking your job, to be honest with you. And you told me that you had graduated from college, and it was at the time when COVID had shut everything down, and the degree that you had didn't afford you to go where you thought you were gonna go, and that you landed here and that you loved working here, and that just meant a lot. And I hope that you will enjoy working here. And the events that you guys put on are just top-notch. I can't wait to see the stealing of the courthouse, as for those of us who are not from North Baldwin.
Illegal transaction. We don't call it stealing.
Well, you know, we from the other parts of the county know, but anyhow, it's all right, because it's in the past, and it's there, and it's staying there, because it's too costly to move it. But yeah, I enjoy the old-timey days up at Bicentennial Park. For those of you who wanna get away from the hustle and bustle from down here, drive up to Stockton on October the 1st, I don't think you'll regret it. Last year, the weather was a little windy, but it was beautiful sunny day. We've had some beautiful sunny weather lately. Let's hope that happens again. My husband is a farmer. He says he loves to look at old tractors, but he don't want an old tractor. So we do love to come up there and look at the old tractors, and it's just amazing to see all the people that come from other parts of the southeast to make that event not impossible, but possible. So I'll hush, but thank you, guys, for what you do. I do really appreciate it, and I know the people of Baldwin County, the ones who don't know, that's why we're doing this, is trying to get the word out. And I think we've got, in just a few years, the 250, 1776 celebration coming up.
Yes, ma'am.
So we gotta get geared up for that. And I think there was some Revolutionary War events that may have occurred in this county as well, so that'll be interesting to hear about all that. So thank y'all.
Felicia, I just wanna say thank you. I haven't had a chance, you and your staff, I haven't had a chance to go up there and see you, but I've loved history. I just, I like the old history. My family was here a long time, too, and I have a great uncle that used to run the ferry across Fish River years, years ago. So I just, it's, thank you for what you do. And when I walk through all the courthouses and see all the old pictures, it just gives me chill bumps, because I like to see old pictures. I appreciate y'all doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Felicia, for what you and your staff do. I love Archives. I like the support that we give y'all. For a county older than the state itself, we are rich in history, and thank y'all for preserving that. And like Commissioner Underwood said, I encourage the public to go and visit our building. If you can pull up records from 1798, that's pretty amazing. I don't know too many places where you can go and do that locally. So the events that are coming up, I encourage y'all that have not been there, the Old Time Days, the courthouse reenactment, it sounds like fun for the new thing, for the scavenger hunt's gonna be fun. But all these events, the public turns out in great numbers, and we have a great time. And it's just fun reminiscing and reenacting history and being able to look. Because when you talk about those old tractors, those things right there are actually still working.
They do.
And they're plowing fields, and they're running, some of them are running on steam and that kind of stuff. And some are real loud and some aren't. But I hang around those guys making the syrup, because they'll always give a little sample when it's finished, and that's good. So it's a good, that's a great, both of those events, as far as the Old Time Days and the removal of the courthouse, are great family events to bring to long chairs and just set up for the day. And I appreciate it, Felicia, again, for everything that you do.
Thank you for inviting me to be a part of the reenactment. Thank you.
Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adopt the proclamation for Archives Month in October 2022.
I'll second that.
We got a motion by Commissioner Underwood, a second by Commissioner McKenzie adopting the proclamation, Archives Month in October 2022. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Proclamation is approved. All right, Ron. I wish I had a snare drum up here or something, and we could do the drum roll.
Lots of gloves.
Yeah, no, we don't need that anymore. We've thrown those away. Our administrator, Ron Sink, is here today to present our fiscal year 2022-23 budget. Mr. Sink.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
If I can get this to...
You've got to get your computer to sync.
Yes.
In sync.
Ron doesn't seem to wanna communicate. I know it.
At least the air conditioner's working.
I got mine working. You gotta see it, dude.
All by yourself.
I can run this way if it'll go to the next.
Hey, Brian, hit that, hit the one down there at the bottom right. That slide screen, all the way at the bottom right. Below the button, you know what I'm talking about?
It's PowerPoints locked up.
Okay. You ain't gonna be able to go through this one like Felicia did hers.
Even though I have him with, he'll be with me.
Got any music?
No music on this one.
Take the money and run.
I'm gonna step down and give me some coffee. Here it goes.
Y'all need anything on this one? Thank you.
Actually, I just gathered to call.
Thank you, Brian. You ready, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners and Mr. Chairman. Before you is the 2023 fiscal year budget. I've got a little brief presentation, and then you have some resolutions to adopt. Again, we're focusing, continuing to focus on the economic recovery from the pandemic and the hurricane, and the continuation of several large infrastructure projects. Couple of them that are completing right now is the two highway bars. Very, very proud of that. And the jail project is ongoing, and I know I'm leaving a couple of other ones off, but there's more in the future associated with that. And I'm gonna bring up next, the economic development is a top importance for the Commission. And I know the Commission is very, very proud to announce that one of the largest, the largest economic expansion in the county's history, and actually, one of the largest economic expansions in the state, if not the largest, as with the addition of Novellus Corporation to our fair county. Customer service and building relationships with citizens and other local government entities and county activities and facilities continues to be a top priority for the Commission. The county remains focused on achieving the goals adopted in the 2019 strategic plan. Public safety. Public safety is a very important focus for the Commission. Infrastructure and growth, all one needs to do is look around and see the number of people on the roads, the number of people at any of our facilities, the number of people at any of the events. You know, talked about Felicia's plow days. I used, I was a kid on one of those tractors, okay? And I could drive it down the road. You can't do that anymore.
Showing your age.
Absolutely, in the gray. But the infrastructure and growth are prime. Last but not least on these highlights is, the Commission is pursuing a recycle center known as a MRF Materials Recycle Facility. And this emphasizes the Commission's commitment to the natural environment and of our county and to maintaining a clean, healthy environment for the protection of our citizens. So now we get into the numbers. There's a breakdown, and this will be, of course, on the website, and the details behind all of this. Here are the various funds on the 23. And I'm just gonna, I'm not gonna read the numbers. I'll bore everybody to tears. Total is 240, 888, 740. That's almost quarter of a billion dollars. That's a pretty good-sized number. Comparatives in the general fund, you're looking at about 21% versus a year ago. Major impact for revenue has been Avalorm. Sales tax continues to show very good growth. And again, I'm not gonna bore everybody. Again, looking at about an overall, overall 15% increase associated with the budget. This slide shows 15% from year to year. Since 19, we're looking at about a 32% increase. Headcount, salary and headcount, salary as a percent of the budget is about 21%, a little over 21%. And we're looking at 817 total budgeted headcount. Data on this slide does exclude the Sheriff's Department. Here's a quick pie chart of where the money comes from. As you can see, Avalorm tax is the largest percentage share, and then followed by fees and charges, transfers in amongst the funds, and then sales tax is a very, very big number associated with revenues. Now, what is it used for? General government consumes 38% of it. Public safety is 24, 20%. Sanitation, 9. Health, 4.5. Roads and bridges, 25%. Recreation, a couple percent, and you can see all of the small percentages thereafter. And the complete budget will be found, can be found out at the county's website. I should be able to get it posted sometime this upcoming week.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Commissioners, do y'all have any comments for Ron?
No, just thank you so much, Ron, for what you've done, you know, getting this budget to the Commission. And a lot of hard work goes into it. People don't realize what it takes to get to where we're at. But I want to thank you so very much for your hard work that you and your staff done to present this to the Commission.
Thank you as well for being the Finance Chair. I really appreciate working with you. Enjoy that.
Thank you.
Your mic, though.
Thank you. I know it's not, when we just see these few slides, it might not seem as complicated as it is, but I know how complicated it is. And I appreciate your perseverance and endurance and putting up with me, particularly this last few months, because sometimes when we have questions, we need answers. And I appreciate you for helping us get those answers. And I'm thankful that we're in the position that we're in, traveling throughout this state. Not everybody's in the position that we're in. But we're also a very fast-growing county, and if we weren't in this position, we would be in a bad shape. So I feel like that everyone that works here at the county are good stewards of the taxpayers and the citizens' dollars, and appreciative of all the hard work that you do. And thank you, Commissioner Gruber, for being Finance Chair and helping, because it's not something that you don't really know that's going on, because you're not the chairman in the meetings and different things like that. And each one of us have duties throughout the year that are different than just the actual chairman duties, like, you know, road and bridge, finance, and economic and industrial development. So I'm very excited about the things that are happening right now and that we're in a position to move forward. Thank you.
Ron, just thank you. This is my first one, and I guess every many, but this was a tougher for me, because there was a lot thrown at me. Just wanna say thank you. Thank you for Skip and the other Commissioners for getting this done, and we, you know, I'm just glad it's over.
Me, too.
And thank you for your staff. So thank you.
Yeah, you hit the nail on the head, Matt. You came in at the worst time you could possibly come in. I've never seen a Commissioner come in at the end of budget, so it's kinda hard, but you did a good job picking up, and you're part of this process as well. So I don't wanna thank Ron and staff, but I thank each department that sat in here and all the meetings that we had, from all the way up from our elected officials down to each single department head, because it definitely is a team effort to get to where we are today, all up until the last minute yesterday, working tirelessly to do what's best for the citizens of Baldwin County and this great organization that we call the County Commission. Ron, you have worked tirelessly on this. You've heard from all of us with different ideas, comments, and stuff, and you always had answers to our questions. And I appreciate all the hard work and diligence that you put into this, and you make our lives easier with what you do. Thank you, Commissioner Gruber, for your term as the Finance Chair. I think, like Commissioner Underwood said, these are all underlooked positions that we have, but being Finance Chair during a budget season is pretty tough. But here we are today, going to hopefully pass this budget, and what a great day for the county. Somebody mentioned the other day about it, the numbers. I mean, you showed a 15% increase every year. The way this county grows, the budget's gonna grow. So I appreciate this. I'm looking forward to it being published on the website. Commissioners, with that being said...
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we adopt Resolution Number 2022-166 of the Baldwin County Commission, which pursuant to Amendment Number 750 and Amendment Number 772, the Constitution of the State of Alabama, relates to the proclamation of local economic industrial development.
Did you wanna finish that reading?
Economic development, provided by the Baldwin County Commission and a variety of expenditures of public funds as it relates to areas of appropriations and authorized by Baldwin County Commission for fiscal year 2022 to 2023 budget, which respectfully serves valid and sufficient public purposes.
And we, so that, Commissioner, is a separate motion. We're gonna adopt Resolution 2022/166? Commissioner, my Commissioner Gruber made the motion. You here a second?
I'll second that.
We've got a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022/166. Any discussion on this?
I need to look at something real quick.
Okay.
Okay.
Where's the, where's the updated, says resolution?
That comes in the next one.
Next one is 165. Commissioner.
Huh?
It's in the next... Next resolution, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
There's two resolutions, Commissioner Underwood. The first one we're adopting is the budget. The second one is the decision items list and it's gonna have the replacement attachment items noted in DA 3, if you look at your red index of everything.
Where is that replacement item? I'm looking in my thing. That's what I wanted to see. I've been trying to find it.
It's in the, it's in the addendum in the shared, it's in the shared folder. Be under item DA 3.
Okay, I got something. There's six pages to that, is that right?
That's correct.
Well, where's the breakdown, though, on the training and travel? I never saw that from yesterday. Or the total amount that it was reduced by. What was...
I didn't include it in the, it's included in the numbers in the overall budget resolution.
So we don't have a break, a breakdown in that of how it was adjusted?
Is that the six pages, Ron? Is that...
No, that's the, that's the overall budget resolution. You've got two resolutions. 165, which deals with the economic side of it. And then 165, 16, excuse me, 166 and then 165 is the budget, overall budget resolution.
Yes, sir.
I wanted to see what was changed. I have not seen that. I thought it would be printed out.
Brian, can you put that up, what you did yesterday? Ron, would you like to tell Commissioner Underwood the total savings?
That were changed.
That was around 80.
It was 81.
It was around 80.
Eighty thousand.
Around 80.
Huh?
It was around, difference, $80,000 difference taken off.
It's in a difference.
Of just...
This one, what we're voting on right, what we're voting on right now has nothing, has to do with the economic development, the 750 and the 772s. The others set, the next thing will be with everything else that we've done, you know, the part that we've done.
All right, I want to be sure. I know what I'm voting on because I voted on something a few months ago and I had to...
I don't know why we're waiting on that. Were you able to get in touch with the corner yesterday and...
I couldn't get reach of him. I did talk to Board of Registars.
Did you talk to Zach?
Yes.
There it is. Okay, that's what I wanted to see.
I know, but we made some other changes in the system. Lower them.
Just scroll down to the bottom. So the, the total's not changed, is it? Is that an updated Psalm?
What's your question?
The 296 total is...
Yes. That includes those, the red numbers, I think.
Is that something?
It can't, it can't include...
Hold on.
Yeah, because look, because before we started, it was 286.
So how'd it go up?
Are you in travel or training?
We're, I'm in, I'm in travel.
That's travel.
Excuse me, training, training.
Okay.
Go to the bottom of that one.
222.
It's less than that because Zach and Board of Registars moved yesterday, too.
Okay, so we went from 286 to 222, but you've got a couple more adjustments to bring that down a little bit.
What numbers, what numbers do we, can you plug them in, Brian?
Yeah, Ron will tell you what they are. Let's go to Board of Adjustments. Or, excuse me, Board of Arrest, Board of Adjustment, Board of Registars. We took that, what else were you talking about, Ron?
Zach.
All right, go to EMA and what were we taking that down to?
Do you remember Zach? Zach's here.
12, 12,000.
Wait.
There you go. 6,000.
Okay.
Okay.
And, I mean, we don't know about him yet. I mean, that could, that could change. He's not here to speak for himself. I just, I know he's got all the new guys coming on board with him, is probably gonna need that training.
When you got up there?
That's training, that's...
So that took 70,000 off of the original number? I know that just flips it over to general or wherever it, fund it comes out of. Okay, can you flip back over to the travel then?
We were at 338 on that before we started. Did anything else come off of that, Ron, to your knowledge?
Yes, sir.
It's just a whole lot there, you know, budgeted that has never been used and I just was looking at those numbers and so... All right, so at least we got almost a couple hundred thousand off, right?
Correct.
Just swaps it back over. Okay. All right, I'm okay now.
So we're at the, we have a motion and a second for that first resolution that didn't have anything to do with this, so...
No, but I wanted to be sure.
Right, I got you because we're gonna address that on the next one. On the next one, because it's gonna have to be, all that's gonna have to be noted on the next one. So if you want to make that motion on the next one, you can...
Well, we haven't finished the other one yet.
I know, I know. We got a motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second and that was questions and now it's time for vote, I guess. Okay, all right.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2022-165 on the Baldwin County Commission, which adopts the Baldwin County fiscal year 2023, 2022 and 2023 budget and approves the attach decision item list for fiscal year 2023 through, according to Resolution 2023-165.
Okay, and Commissioner Gruber, if you don't mind noting, for the record, on your agenda, note that, the red there.
Yeah, okay. Each resolution should be voted on separately in order, in the order indicated in the staff's recommendation.
And so we had a couple of replacement items in there as we just discussed. Am I correct, Ron? We are voting on the adoption of this resolution with the amended changes that have been made and brought forth to you as of yesterday.
Yes, sir.
Which includes the updated reflected changes in travel and training and personnel for the commission as well as the sheriff's office.
That's correct.
Just wanted to get that on the record that what we are adopting includes all the changes that we have discussed. We have a motion by Commissioner Gruber.
I'll second that.
A second by Commissioner McKenzie. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion processed. Next up, as agenda reflects, we're in our public hearings section. To start off, we have our building inspector, Eddie Harper, here with us today to present case number UNA 22/4, the unsafe nuisance abatement of 24217, County Road 87, Robertsdale, Alabama. Eddie?
Morning, Commissioners. Morning, Mr. Chairman. Fortunately, when we get to this time of the unsafe nuisance abatement, it lights a fire up under people. And so as of this morning, this case has been resolved to the satisfaction of the building department and we do not need to adopt this resolution.
Okay, so does that mean, do we still open a public hearing and have...
No, sir. There's no need to open the public hearing.
No need to open the public hearing?
Yep, because it's been full of...
So just let the record reflect that per Eddie Harper, item EF1 has been removed?
Yeah, the nuisance has been abated and the item can be removed from the agenda. It doesn't need to be voted on or opened.
Good.
Good deal.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eddie.
I know the next two have not done that, so we'll at least get to hear some public hearings today. So the next case is gonna be under our planning zoning. Case number Z22/14. This is the Lazary property rezoning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Cory Rhodes and I'm the newest planner in the department. And I'm pleased to present for your consideration, Z2214 Lazary Property. The request is to rezone 12 acres from RSF2 to RA. It's in Planning District 12 and currently zoned RSF2. The location of the subject property is west of County Road 49 and south of Timber Ridge Drive in Locksley, and the current use is vacant. And the applicant is Mr. Timothy Lazary. He was also the owner of the property. And the proposed zoning is for RA, rural agricultural. The applicant's request is to allow for farm-related structures to reside on the property. Now, this is the locator map and the site map. And below that is a table showing you the adjacent zoning and the adjacent land use. I won't go into detail with that, but if you want me to go back to any of these slides, especially with the property images, I am happy to do that at the end of this presentation. These are the property images of the subject property and the properties to the south, to the east. This is the current zoning requirements for RSF2 and the proposed zoning requirements for RA. Staff analysis and findings, the requested change is compatible with the surrounding uses, the surrounding uses and are adjacent and, or excuse me, residential and vacant and timberland. A future land use designation of residential has been provided for the subject property. However, with approval of the rezoning, this will result in an amendment to the future land use map to agricultural. The surrounding land uses are residential and timberland and vacant, and staff feels the proposed amendment is consistent with the area. Other matters that may be appropriate, there do appear to be a potential wetlands on the subject property, so a wetland delineation may be required before zoning site plan approval. And this is an image of the potential wetlands and on the subject property. No other agency comments. And then staff recommendation was approval. At the planning commission, they also recommended approval to rezone from RSF2 to RA. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do y'all have any questions, Commissioners?
No question.
Okay. Opening this public hearing on case Z22/14, the Lazary property rezoning. Is anybody signed up in the audience, wish to speak for or against this matter? Hearing none. The public hearing is closed. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve case number Z22-14, the Lazary property rezoning.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Commissioner Gruber, second by Commissioner Underwood, to approve case number Z22/14, the Lazary property rezoning. Any further discussion on this topic? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Next up, we've got case Z22/15. God has bid in property rezoning.
All right, this is a request to rezone 4.6 acres from RA to HDR. The subject property is located in Planning District 30. It is currently zoned RA, which is rural agricultural. The property is on the east side of the Beach Express and south of Roscoe Road. It consists of 4.6 acres and the applicant is asking for HDR, which is high-density residential district. The applicant would like to put townhomes on the subject property, which would be more than six dwelling units per acre. Here's the locator map and aerial photography. You can see the subject property is just east of some B4 zoning. There's also B3 in the area and a single family. Further to the west, the property is right off the Beach Express, is located in the city of Orange Beach. Here's some property images of the subject property and adjacent properties. This is the current zoning requirements for RA. And these are the proposed zoning requirements for HDR. As you can see on the map below, the surrounding uses in the area, you have, to the north, you've got some property owned by the city of Orange Beach. You also have commercial in the area. You have EMC and the Columbia Southern University in the area. Staff does feel this is, the HDR is compatible with the area, with the, all the commercial uses and its vicinity off the Beach Express. These, this is some information provided by the applicant. They answered our standards that we usually answer. They also provided some maps for us. This is the proposed, what they are proposing to do. They're proposing a little eight units per acre. Staff has recommended approval and the planning commission also recommended approval at their August meeting.
Thank you, Selena. Are there any questions for Selena? Public hearing is now open on Z22/15. God has bid promptly zoning. Is there anybody in the audience signed up to speak for or against this project?
The applicant is here, but he said he'd answer any questions if y'all had them.
Do y'all have any questions?
Do y'all have any questions for the applicant?
I do have a question. This is so close to the city of Orange Beach, and in my opinion, having high-density apartments in the county is not the most desirable thing to have in the unincorporated area of Baldwin County. Has there been any indication or any inclination, I guess you would say, of, I know there's a piece of property between you and the city of Orange Beach, should become that? And does, who, does Orange Beach patrol that area, or do they not patrol outside of their city limits?
I don't think they do either.
So this would be in their police jurisdiction, and they do patrol it. It's not just, okay. That kind of answers that question then, okay? But what about, I mean, did you have any desire to become a part of Orange Beach, or you just want to stay in the county?
I would say that the owner would be interested in that and welcome that if other neighbors around, I think, were one property away from. But, you know, not, I think that's kind of a crystal ball question. I don't know that they have necessarily thought that all the way through, but I think that, yeah, I think that that would be-
I guess just what I've seen as far as, like, high-density developments like that out in the unincorporated area of the county, even though that is a zoned area of the county, it just kind of seems that it could pose some potential future problems, just depending on the cycle of the development. So that's my only concerns. And I didn't know, there was, was it unanimous? It wasn't unanimous at the planning commission, was it?
No.
Was there any indications?
There was two that voted against it. I think it was six to two.
They didn't say what their-
They just had concerns with the high density.
Okay. I know it's in vicinity of the other apartments down there, just, okay. All right, that's all. Thank you.
Any more questions?
Yes, sir.
Close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve case number Z22 dash 115. God is Bidden Property Res zoning.
I'll second that.
Right, there's a motion made by Commissioner Gruber, a second made by Commissioner Underwood to approve case number Z22 slash 15. God is Bidden Property Res zoning. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Selena.
Thank you.
We're in our F items, Commissioners. Get to my computer back real quick. All right, F item, FA1. Purchase of real property adjacent to the Baldwin County Revenue Commission Building in Baymanet, Alabama. Commissioners, if y'all would, if you pull this up, there's a staff recommendation. And that's a long one.
Do we have to read that?
Yes.
The whole thing?
Yes. All one, two, three, four. So you ready to tackle it? Get your first run at it.
This'll be my second big one.
All right.
Yes, I got my glass going, thank you. Yes, went blank, sorry. Make a motion that we approve the staff recommendations. Do I go and just read it all, Jim? All one, two, three? Adopt Resolution 2022 dash 173, which authorized the Baldwin County Commission to purchase real property located adjacent to the Baldwin County Own Revenue Commission Building in Baymanet, Alabama. Specifically identified as parcel number 5 dash 23 dash 05 dash 21 dash 4 dash 000 dash 003 dash 001. The PIN is 39814. And number two, approve the unapproved lots land purchase agreement between the Baldwin County Commission and Dorothy Gail McMillan, trustee of Stephen and Gail McMillan revocable trust for the county to purchase the property in the amount of $100,000, and authorize the chairman to execute the purchase agreement on behalf of the county and to take such other actions on behalf of the county in connection with the property, including but not limited to the execution of additional documents to purchase the property and to do all things necessary and required by the purchase agreement. And four, make the disclosure of information on purchase of real property pursuant to Alabama Act 2014 dash 133, part of the record for the September 2022, excuse me, 2022 Baldwin County Commission regular meeting. I'll second that motion.
Got a motion by Commissioner McKenzie, a second by Commissioner Gruber to approve item FA1. Any further discussion? See, we had the easy part, Matt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Good job, Matt.
Yeah, thank y'all.
All right. Item FA2 has been not moving forward at this time, so we will address that on another commission date regarding our county-owned cars. FM1 is, we discussed that yesterday with ARPA updates. And then we discussed yesterday on FAQ1, the Christmas holidays. We did find out some interesting information on that, Sheriff. As yesterday, we were coming up with ideas on the Christmas holidays, and we were going to take off-
It's on 2023. Would this be-
It'd be the 20, this is in 2023 now. There was going to be a day taken off in observance for Christmas on Monday, and then Tuesday, everybody was on board with taking off that Tuesday. We have found out, for now, the state is only going to be closed on Christmas Day and open on Tuesday. So if we go through with this, we will need to, I guess, notify you to have the security in places at all three of our locations. So right now, like I said, just a discussion item, if we come to the terms that we are going to take that day off for Christmas, we will keep you properly informed.
Yes, sir. No problem. Typically, there is always a little bit of slight deviation between sheriff's office, holiday schedule, and the commission. Usually, that deviation has to do with the courts.
Right.
So we do try to make sure that we have the security in place in the courts where we're going to be.
Yes, sir. All right. At this time, we're at item G, Commissioner's Request. Does any commissioner have a request today?
Not today.
Nope.
No, sir.
I don't either. Request. We have an agenda item? Think we do. Go back and look.
That LEPC thing?
Yeah.
We talked about that yesterday.
Yes, we need to vote on that.
I'll make a motion.
So it's HA1.
I'll make a motion, we approve the request from the LEPC committee for the purchase of a digital pressure test kit.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Commissioner Underwood, a second by Commissioner McKenzie to approve item HA1. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Ron, do we have a senior staff report today?
Just as a reminder, review your divisional resolution.
Okay.
Review the draft.
Okay.
And upcoming will be boards in front of y'all.
We got until now, until November to look at that. Okay. Matt, you'll be seeing some emails coming in, and what the divisional resolution does is set our whole entire quadrantium up. So just look over that, be lots of stuff to read. Make sure, I spoke with Anu yesterday, making sure that some of the dates that we've added in there doesn't pile up on us as far as meetings are concerned, three or four meetings in a week and that kind of stuff. So we're going through, looking through, making sure that everything is set right, because we did add department head meetings in there, which have not been there before. So, yes. Do you have anything you want to say on that, Commissioner Underwood?
Well, we already addressed one, you know, rotation of the work sessions, that there was actually, I think we got that fixed, didn't we? Yeah, okay. It had kind of skipped Central Annex and added, you just kind of pushed the rotation forward. I said, no, keep it in the same rotation. If there's not an opportunity to have a meeting there that month, that's still that month for that facility. We don't keep pushing it forward because it gets everybody off track of where you're supposed to be.
So we will look over that and keep looking over. I'm sure that draft will be amended 50 times before we get it done. So, but I like the way it looks. It's a lot of information as well, that the public just doesn't realize what goes into that document. So thank y'all for working on that.
Anu's the-
Oh, yeah, there's no doubt.
Heavy hauler on this one. I appreciate her.
Yes, sir.
Brad, do you have anything for us?
No, sir.
Any public comments today?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a gentleman signed up to speak, Mr. Francis Rip.
Francis Rip, I write the Rip Report, totally responsible for it. Congratulations, Matt. Remember, I voted for you for what that might be.
Thank you.
The Rip Report is a not-for-profit organization, and what I'm going to speak about today, I want to preface by saying that in the Marine Corps, I was in the military police. When I lived in Central America, I worked with the FBI, the DEA, and multiple American embassies. So I'm about as pro-police as you will get, but good policing. Baldwin County, for years, Land Yap Magazine, as well as the Rip Report, have been writing about a multitude of incidents that are dismissed by protocol within the police department. And when you look at the cases, and I'll recite a couple of them to you, being Mr. OJ French first, okay? We're in the middle of that up in Baymanet. That's what's spurring this, and this may be what breaks the camel's back on this. But before this, we had Payton Little, who is a confidential informant, strangled by a seatbelt in a moving car. That may be the only case in the United States like that. Nothing ever happened. He was just a confidential informant. We had five people die on I-10 being chased by a police car, Baldwin County Sheriff, the wrong way down the highway, three burned alive. Then we had Robert Gates, an eviction, simple eviction. His house was shot up over 114 times, demolished, and he was killed. Jonathan Victor, I-10, holding a fanny pack and a coat, and he was shot four times, killed. He did not have a weapon. This was in 21 feet of the officer. That's about as close as where Matt is to me. And he was killed. None of these people robbed a bank. None stole a car. None committed any serious crime. None of them. However, our major crimes unit, which is composed of police officers in Baldwin County investigating themselves, there has been no accountability whatsoever. Now, and I feel like the sheriff's department has been hiding behind every type of immunity that they can get, and it's catching up. You have a $39 million budget, 16% for the sheriff's office. George Floyd settled that case, 27 million. Breonna Taylor, 12 million. You are en route of having that type of, some, of that case coming this way. About a year ago, Matt was not here, but the other three commissioners were here. Sheriff Matt got, was requesting, I believe it was around $600,000 for cameras. And I talked to people in jails and everywhere else, we got cameras. Cameras are everywhere. The selling point on those $600,000 for the cameras to the commissioners was that this was going to provide transparency and accountability, not only to the general public, but the police as well. That's not happened. Time and time again, we are denied any of the footage unless the footage is used for the benefit of defense. That's not what we agreed to. We agreed to 600,000 for the cameras was going to be for the general public as well. You spoke earlier today about public safety. This is nine people that lost their lives. And I think one out of the nine had a gun. But not one of them was committing any major crime at the time of their death. The cameras are, is going to be the case point with this. If you watch the national news, it's happening over and over again. It all comes down to the cameras. If we're paying $600,000 for the cameras as consumers and taxpayer, then let us see what the hell's on the cameras. If you're not going to do that, then get the sheriff's department to give us back our 600,000 and let's use it for something else. What do you do? As a defense for the county, I would request that the case with OJ French be taken out of the hands of major crimes and hand it over to somebody outside the county, or the feds, or somebody to look into. If you don't do that, you're going to be building a box around yourself.
Mr. Rip, I graciously let you speak for five minutes when it's supposed to be three.
Okay.
Wrap it up.
Well, really, I had three other subjects, but you formed, I had to fill some out for each form, so I didn't do it. But, but, yeah, that's fine. That's fine. I cannot emphasize to you the seriousness of Mr. French's case. And the reason I'm mentioning these past cases is any lawyer worth his salt is going to bring every damn one of those up. Thank you.
Anybody have signed up to speak today? Ron? Next up, we have press questions. Anybody from the press? Please come to the podium, state your name and-
Hi, I'm Kyle Hammerick. I'm with the Land Yap, and I just wanted to ask, on the agenda item CJ1, is there any one-time or outgoing money for that memorandum of understanding for the funeral homes?
Not for funeral homes. Let me go back to that agenda item. Ron, can you answer that question?
It is an MOU.
It's MOU, yeah. Well, it's MOU, yeah.
And it should be attached to this. We have a copy of it here. Do you like that?
It's on our website.
Oh, okay.
It's on our website. The full, everything that's attached, the whole 947 pages to the support for the outline is on there, and there is a memorandum of understanding for, between the coroner's office and those entities.
So is there any money that goes with that, or is there not?
I don't think there is. When you say money, you're-
Like, like kind of a payment for services?
There's no financial, there's no financial cost to the county.
Okay.
I mean, we don't have, there's only a couple of funeral homes around our area, and correct me if I'm wrong, if anybody knows anything about this, that has storage facilities to be able to keep bodies in. Our coroner's office doesn't hold a lot, and so they utilize the services of the funeral homes. And these are the only two that I know of that can hold an amount of bodies at a time if needed, so.
Yeah, I believe the MOU is really for, aimed at mass casualty events. And so unless there is a mass casualty.
It's just in the event.
I don't know that anything happens. I mean, it's, it's just kind of a just-in-case. But those might be better questions for the coroner, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
This generates out of his, he's an elected official, and this generates out of his.
Yeah, I would recommend, since he's a different elected official, he's just under our umbrella, yeah. Asking, but, I mean, it's just in case, like they said, in case there is a need, we don't have enough storage, is that right?
Yeah, so the objective, and it's on the website, but the objective of this agreement is to establish policies and procedures, provide storage of bodies during a mass fatality or due to mechanical issues that could result in decomposition of persons, and to maintain services that meet and exceed applicable standards. So if the coroner's having technical difficulties that are, where he can't store bodies and whatnot. So it's kind of a backstop.
There's no money, there's no value.
Thank y'all very much. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Gruber, yes, sir. Again, thanks to staff and everything for getting us where we're at today for this meeting. And also, I want to say, thank Ron for, and the budgeting staff for all the hard work they did getting this budget approved for this coming, next coming year. As y'all could see, there's a, there's a lot of changes in it, and a lot of increase. And I just want to thank Ron for what he's done, and Susan, and everyone for all the hard work they put into getting it prepared for us. Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Thank everybody for today. I know it was, it seemed like we could get this accomplished in just a little over an hour or whatever, but there's a lot went into this, and just like we mentioned, the reporter, that it's actually almost a thousand pages that accompany this, and it's amazing. I can't say I read every page, but I have flipped through every single page this past week when it presented. So it, it's a lot, just, it's a lot just looking at it, and to think about everybody that had to type up all this stuff and look at it. And I know you guys are very diligent about looking for just even typos. I know the word's out, the villagers don't find them. If y'all don't, no, I don't find them all. But some things just stand out to me. And being a numbers person, I appreciate you guys helping me with some of the numbers that were in the budget. Some things just have to make sense to me, and I know I get on people's nerves, but once I can get it settled in my head, I'm okay with it. But sometimes I just have to have a little more explanation than other people. Also, just wanted to say that we're about to finish up this. This is actually going, got one more month of this term, and then we all, there's a vote on November the eighth, and a few of us are completely unposed. So it's, it's, it's been my pleasure to serve in this capacity, and I do look forward to the next four years. And a lot has changed and happened just in those four years. It's just amazing, and I appreciate the guys I work with and all the staff that works at the county. And keep in mind, some of the, you know, somebody was asking me about, you know, coming to work for the county. Why would I want to come work for the county? And I kind of mentioned this yesterday. You know, we have a lot of job positions that come open. I think we need to really tell people why you like working at the county. If you don't like working here, then why are you working here? But I mentioned the young man, Bradley, that works at the Archives Department. He was such a pleasure to talk to. He just, he was just like, I love my job. I love what I do. And, you know, that warms your heart. So I hope that we can encourage other people. If I'd have known about this opportunity, I wouldn't be elected, man. I'd be retired now, because I'm old enough, I could be retired. If I'd have known, I could come work at the county when I was right out of college. I'd have that thirty years in, and, phew! But anyhow, I think there's a lot of benefits out there, and I think that people who don't realize that need to know that. And for those of you who are thinking about a job opportunity, please look at Baldwin County Commission. That being said, I'm sure I'm missing some things that I was wanting to say, but thank y'all.
I'd just like to say thank you to the employees and Ron, for your staff for getting this budget finished. I know we already said it once before, but just glad it's over for me, and we'll move on for the next years. But just thank everybody, everybody from the directors to the employees, everybody that had a part in this. And I just want to say thank y'all.
Absolutely. When it gets down to me, I'll be glad when I can get back in the rotation speaking like first or second, so. I just got a couple of things I'd like to add that's maybe not everybody's aware of, but I can't even remember what day it was. September fifteenth, I had the opportunity to go down to the sixty-seventh Annual Meeting of the Area Six Association of Soil and Water Conservation Districts to see our very own Commissioner Underwood accepting an award for the outstanding elected official. So we're always about awards in here, and telling our employees, good job and stuff. So I just wanted to congratulate Commissioner Underwood with her award that she was presented with there. And she might want to say something. I'll let her talk about that later on, so, if she wants to speak about that. But it's, it was a great time, fellowship meeting, all those, I've been to a meeting over there before, so if y'all ever get a chance to go to that meeting, keep up with their, it's a fun thing, take a trip down to Monroeville, and they'll take you on that courthouse tour if you've never been down there on that before. So just a couple of things happened in my area over the week. Coming up on Thursday night, I just want to remind people, if you want to come from all, all over the place, in Baymanet, at seven o'clock at the Kid's Park, we have our annual Light in the Darkness Suicide Awareness Walk. This month of September represents a lot of awarenesses. I'd be remiss not to mention that we always go gold in September for Childhood Cancer Awareness Month as well. So just be vigilant of all the things that are happening in your communities, just keep up with the events. But again, this, this Thursday night at seven o'clock in Baymanet's Kid Parks, we will have our Light in the Darkness Suicide Awareness Walk, which is a very somber thing to be a part of if you've never done it before. So it sometimes affects us directly, indirectly, but it affects the communities as a whole. And it's a, it's a very great event to attend and to show your support. Thank you, staff, again. Reiterate what all the other commissioners said about what goes into setting all this up. Commissioner Davis used to say, we're a small part of a big organization, and that's exactly right. We always say this. But y'all are never underappreciated. We value your, your work ethic towards this organization. It takes a team to move this ship, and I really appreciate all the work that y'all do to, to help us move along, because we couldn't do it without you. And this has been a, you know, a learning experience for all of us, and this, passing this budget today is, I know, Ron, is a weight off your shoulders, a weight off our shoulders, and we're good for, and there's exciting things happening on the horizon. So Commissioner Underwood, did you want to say anything about your award?
Well, I'm very humbled to receive the award. I had no idea that I was even nominated, and I want to give a shout out to the Soil and Water Conservation Districts. There's a Region Six that we're a part of in Baldwin County, and it's fifteen counties, and they honored several people there that day. I was not the only person that was honored, but they do so many things that most people don't even know that they do. And they made a really good presentation there that day that talked about how that if we did not do some soil conservation and water conservation, we would be like a dust bowl that we were back in the thirties, and how that it's so important that farmers and, and that we as elected officials and then the citizens take note of making sure that our soil and water is, you know, we got to be good stewards of that. And so there, there's some things, there's, I want to give a shout out to our state representatives that were honored there today, that day as well. They honored Representative Gaston from Mobile and two from Baldwin County, which was Harry, Representative Shiver, and Representatives Faust. And they, along with Governor Ivey, increased the budget for the soil and water conservation last year. For those of you who don't know about the soil and water conservation programs and different things they have, they also are part of the wild hog trapping and stuff that's going on. If you don't live, if you live in a subdivision inside of the city, you probably don't have a clue what's going on with these wild hogs out there and what they're doing and destroying our rural areas. They're very invasive, they produce very, very fast, and so they have a really good program going on about that. And there's also monies available to help with erosion that's going on people's properties. As a governmental entity, people are often confused, and I'm trying to think in my mind, and I've tasked some of our employees to come up, with our staff members to come up with ways to let the public know, what does the governmental entity responsible for, and what is the landowners responsible for when it comes to things like flooding and soil erosion and different things like that? And I really feel like that the Soil and Conservation District meets that gap between the private landowner and the public entity. You know, please, by all means, if you're, if you're, I was talking to the engineer yesterday, I was like, you know, I wish we could put out some kind of PR thing that tells that, hey, if your culvert, culvert's clogged, or you're in the ditch, and you're a private landowner, call us. We want to keep those cleaned out so that water can keep flowing. But if it's your neighbor behind you that's causing the problem, we can't come over there on private property and do anything about that. It's kind of like whenever a hurricane happens, everybody thinks that FEMA's supposed to fix everything. Nope, they just bridge the gap. And county government, city governments, we can't go on private property and fix a lot of these property problems that people have, but there is, it's not a big pot of money, but there's a small pot of money that's out there through the Soil and Conservation District and through the USDA that might, can help some of those, those situations. And so they do a lot of education around with the schoolchildren and the 4H and all those kind of people. So it's kind of like one of those things, like, well, I don't know about it. Well, you know what? You gotta find, you can't just sit by and let everybody come tell you things. You gotta get out there, and you gotta learn about things. So they do a really great thing. I don't know that I'm, we're all deserving of that award. I don't know how I got selected, but I do appreciate it, and I'm humbled to have it. We're a team up here. Nobody can do anything without the other, and so I appreciate you guys. But I was humbled to receive that award, and I'm just giving a shout out. The county commission supports the Soil and Water Conservation Districts, so probably say, yeah, they gave you an award, so you gonna shout out? No, they are, they're a good, good program, and they're, I think that they're just not tapped into enough by the general public. So since we got some media here, maybe y'all will look into them. Thanks.
All right. That being said, is there a motion?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Take it.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner McKenzie, a second by Commissioner Underwood to adjourn at ten oh nine.